Good evening participants. So the only morning study groups are bahagin, nara special session vandu conduct pannirukum. A particular evidence or constitution or C P C or kandini so subjecta padichitukum. But in the session patha abhina, exam oriented, or evidence, or overview, namukkum. Terinchukunna abhina oru vedathila, in the session vandu namak conduct pannirukum. So first of all, thank you Praveena ma'am avgalukku. Enna namak in the sudden, suddena da in the one plan vandu Praveena kattak keekummo. Avgan namak in the issue pannikudukkunna sullirukkanga. So mudungjalavuka, namakip or exam arapoda abhintra bachathila. Oru evidence vandu namo oralavuka, oru weekal controlavuka, namo oru exam vandu attend pantravuka. Oru full, full pledge da namak ma'am sullikudupanga. So first of all, thank you. So ungalke any doubts sirinchabina, molla session namunalla gavaniqla. Doubts sirinchana, namala lastak keetukla. So nama class start pannama, thank you. Good evening everyone. Romnala kalsi, we are conducting class on evidence. So vandu, I was intended to padi sectional in a sillya. So that vandu namo vandu, further be, like 144, 144 la muttum. 145 lindu start kallala, abhingala, na oru idea lindha. So we know morning besammo, the exam point of view or overview marisallakudan. So enna la padikilaa, edukku more importance kurukkala, ebdi padikilaa, irrelevant. Like the indirect questions ebdi la marobningrammaris. So that naanu vandu, siri fine, itla pesna kujja better arukka. It's time, in the time la pesna, kujja ungalukum, catchy arukum, nara avishingal terinchukla, abhingala da. If you're a exam point of view la vandu sordutha, okay, sundha. Ah, ipa adu padhingana, Indian Evidence Acta porutha varikyum. Rumbu chinnakta, nama vandu, in the exam ku padikya kudai, ela acting compare panammo. Indian Evidence Actas very, iti da, 167 sections irukka. In the 167 sections yu, eppidi vandu nyaba vachukla. Namak vandu padhingana, Indian Evidence Actla so far naa patha varikyum. Nara indirect questions keetarkanga. Adu matamellaama, kujja amendments la kujja questions, kujja case laws la kujja questions. Appa direct questions ingaruthu kujja kurayu da. In the provision, ida daa pesuddha, abhingala, direct questions vandu rumbu meager, rumbu kurayu da. Appa vandu, nama eppidi terinchukla, nama eppidi terinchukla, ebdi padikilaa. First of all, vandu, prelim support varikyum, ningavanda naa textbook padikiram, extra nara ya padikiram. Appringaruthu vandu, you're investing a time in a wrong way. Ningavandu, tappa time miss pandringa, sordutha, you're investing time, but it don't, but a wrong thing. Ninga abhi padikirana, aada padikirana, idha padikirana, articles padikirana, abhingala. It should be taravithya Bar Act. Unga Bar Act vandu nook to corner, ungaluk terinchurukunna. On the Bar Act padikimmo, de, eppeyame unga oru, oru good suggestion, not only for exam. Naanu alla suggestion sundhugana, Bar Actlithukku kudai food notesa pathupaladu indha. Updated Bar Acts achirkinga, abhina. Footnote, abhingala, ningavandu, oru vaakiyam asukkiringa, angavandu, kuttiya oru one, two, three nu potrupanga. Anga, anga vandu, andha sentence ru mudiyil, edo oru adathla vandu, one, two, three nu potrupanga. Adheenana, oru kurupita word or illa kurupita visyamo, edaadu oru, amamentla introduce saindha. Amendmenta kila note padipanga. Illa, in, in, in the vaakeetha vandu, highlight panna case law idhu, abhina. Andha case pilot potuk, kila case law note padipanga. So that vandu, firstu vishyana, na, ninga Bar Acta taravu pananu. Bar Acta taravu panammo, Bar Actlithukka kudiyana numbersa note panni. Kila thukkude, footnote la enna sullikutanga, abhingaruthu, kandipa pathukum. So that footnote vandu, namak rara avishu sullikudukum. Honume vandha, oru actla vandu, amendmentna padhikina avishingal, nengi terinchukna, abhina. Footnotea pathaalayi podu. Appa endhavusho, endhavementla vandirukka, with effect from, endhateyidil, adaymari padukpattirukka. Appringaruthu information, namak food note le thanthiruvanga. So first thing. Rendha adu, namavandu romnala padichitukum, abhina. Section by sectiona. Section by sectiona. Over section odhui ingredient, over section sordra content enna, abhingala, namapadikila. Aana ipa vandu, naa last minute preparation la irukka, naa padichirka, aana enki allame overviewa teriina, abhina. Conceptualized study da. Ninga conceptla ponnu, appa admission, abhina, admission na enna? Yaarala admission kodukala? Oru admission odhui validity enna, adhur evidence idhui value enna? Appringaruthu avishingal vandu, ninga abhina, conceptla padikiru. Appa admission na enna, ipa thar admit pandrada, endhavishita admit pandrada. Oru case la irukku kudiyah, fact initial or relevant fact, samanamana avishidra, oru admission nadakke. Adu vandu enna pananu, adu vandu oralaa arukla, documentaryaa arukla, electronic formla arukla. Adu enna pananu, mukyama, it should suggest an inference. Appa court kedu, udu avishidra suggest pannudhe, abhinsibi. In the maadi, oru provision kaana, main provision odhui ingredients terinchittu. Adu enna sollavarudhu, altogether enna sollavarudhu, sulli, conceptualizea padikila. Namakadasi, nimsa preparation illa, oru overview pathukunna, abhina. Section by sectiona varadu, konsole, konstla, karata konst, concept by sa ponnu. Like admission vandu, idhilindu, varikirukka. So in the admission, this vadi pesuddha, so seventeen lindu, twenty-two varikyum, kudai avishavandu, admission vadi pesuddha. Adukapron vandu padhingana, section thirty-one vandu, it is not a conclusive proof, abhingal sullikunna, sulli. Obor yadathilium, conceptualize pannipadichunna, innu seekrama vandu portions cover pandla. Allathukku mala vandu, obor section kaana keyworda, ninga kandipa maintain pandu. Na, enoda classes la nara ya sullipan. Oru section padikiravina, ninga oru sectionan nyaba vachukkakana, easiest way, keywordan nyaba vachukkada. Appa keyword abhinga nyaba vachukvina, ipa na for example, section twenty-seven, appra section sixty-five, eh, section sixty-five. Ah, adukaprom, how will call this, section sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-two. Idi ellame vandha, I had given you some words, oru chinnak, oru keywords marisallipan. Ipap for example, section twenty-seven pathro, abhina. Eppu oru fact distinctive fact aho, abhingaruthu, enna fulfill aguna, C I D redens ratepan. So the statement should be given in custody, it should be a new information. It should lead to discovery, angavora recovery irukunna. Latest stage of the case, it should be used as an evidence, appra distinctive factor. So in the maadi, vandu, oru provision lithukkudiyamotha ingredient yu, namepime oru keywordavachukunna. That is also examination point of view la, ungalu main content marundithaalun, kuda. What can make you remember more, abhina, ningavachukkukkudiyah keyword. Ipavandu, what is primary evidence, abhina, ungalu P U C, abhinsibi, pad. So part, oru part of the document, uniformly produced, counter, counter copy, abhinga sulli. Obor nu kuna keyword sullipan. So that ninga easya vandu, oru, oru sectionan nyaba vachukkunna, abhina. Definitely ninga enna pananu, na, ningla oru self-generated keyword vakkunna. Illa, naa ippidi padichitla, in the order pinadi, in the order, naa padichitla, naa alla padichipan, abhina. Ninga andha methoda follow pandu. So in the maadi la vandu, you can, idu, appavandu, ninga oru exam point of view la padikimmo, ninga edhal la cover pananu. So far, naa potta blueprintla, firstu oru acta padikiringa, na, recent amendments enana, idha, after two thousand, illa two thousand five kaprom. Enana amendmentsa irukka, in the past twenty years la, namak enana amendments kadusukka, abhingaruthu. Ninga oru toguppa padikiru, appa enna enna provision, enna enna time la amendmenta irukka. So amendmenta kandipa go through pandu, amendmentla endhu oru question dukum. Ade maadi landmark judgments. Iba, evidence apoduthikthiina, Pakalanaranayana Swami case, Pulikari Kotaya case. In the maadi, vandu, nara avishesirukka. So vandu, landmark cases la kujja, ninga kandipa vandu, taravu arukunna. Ade maadi, judgments poruthavarku, kandipa recent judgmentla endhu oru keli vidukum. So that nama first partla vandu padhingana, amendment padikiru. Adukapron vandu padhingana, case loss padikiru. Adhutthu, theories and doctrines. Oru actla, enna enna theories irukka, enna enna doctrines irukka, abhingala, namak teriunna. Adukapron, finally padhingana, conceptualized study. Appavandu, oru concept by sa ebdi padichitvarla, abhingaruthu, unik teriunna. So in the naalu cover pannalay podu, kandipa vandu, nama excel pannala, oru subjectla. Amendment, adukapron vandutu, judgments on it, doctrines and theories. Adukapron vandu, conceptualized study. Idi panninaale, kandipa oru, oru acta, nama excel pantravuka. Oru acta vandu, easya nama kaya alala. Andha maadi, we can do. So that nama in the naalu partla, nama preach pathro, abhina. It is going to be an interactive session, naamatame pesiddu da, kandipa keekra participants bore ayirvina. So I'll put forth some questions, naa kandipa ungalada questions keepan. So that you are going to answer me, ba. Siri fine. Ipavandu, itu participants is given time. In the kurupita actla, enna enna amendments vandu sollunga patho. After two thousand three vichkla, two thousand three kaprom, two thousand three lindu, ipavarkyum. Enana amendments vandirukka, what is the most recent amendment? Answers terinchunga, ninga hand raise panni, mee sollu.
Hello madam, vanakkum madam.
Vanakkum ma'am, sollunga ma'am.
Ma'am, amendment vandu, ipa seventy-seven A vandu, amend padithirukangala. Irvathina, irvathina, naal, naal, erndu, thirvati, moona, andha amendmenta sollama, madam?
Seventy-seven A?
Ah, padivitrayi lindu.
Okay, fine, okay, fine. Adu vandu, Indian Evidence Actas seventy-seven A insert pannitkanga, state amendment oh?
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Adu ninga explain mandla.
Okay, adu solladha madam, linee vandha, okay, thank you madam.
Siri fine. So kindly noted down, I'll, ipa naa mark pannirukka amendmentsla kujja sordra. One, one, two thousand three la, one, one, two thousand three la. One, one, two thousand three la, section one fifty-five vandha amendmenta irukka. Section fifty-five amendmenta irukka. So adha, adha, andha amendment idhu, amendment by omission. And the one fifty-five lindhu, or one of the subsectiona tukeydanga. So amendment by omission, adukaprom, sixteen four, two thousand six. Sixteen four, two thousand six. Sixteen four, two thousand six la, one fifty-four subsection two amendmentikanga. One fifty-four subsection two. In the one fifty-five odd amendment too, one fifty-four subsection two amendment too, kujja nerungiyadu, aana enana, three version gap. In the one fifty-five la enna irundhu, abhinga keetinga, idha, half style agranga, illa? Perel saachi agrar, oru tharode witnessa, completea purandalirnu, adha, me eduthikve kudada, abhingsuli sorduthu, one fifty-five la sordanga. One fifty-four la, adha vandu omit pandranga, one fifty-five lindhu, two thousand three amendmentla omit pandranga. One fifty-four la enna pandranga, abhinga keetinga. Later stage la, idha, idhu oru, oru, oru calling party. Ipa naa oru witnessa kudithi varan, avan enak favora arpan, naa kudithi varammo. Avan enak againstana witness avay mariidra. Ipap evenode statementa relay panave vandha, completea abdi talivittralama, abhinga keeta. It states that subsection two la, nothing in this section shall disentitle the person, shall disentitle the person. So permitted under subsection one, to rely on any part of the evidence of which witness. Appo, calling party kudithi, the witness la, avam perel saachi aanalun kuda. Avam kuddu statementla, namala edaadu prosecution use panikamudi, idhu, abhina. Daralamada use pannikala, abhingsuli sordanga. Adha vandu, uphill panna case la da, Govindappa versus State of Karnataka. Govindappa versus State of Karnataka. Govindappa versus State of Karnataka, adhalaga sordanganana. Ah, un, oru, in, oru hostile witness sonnavishyathla vandu, ninga completea elakki talivittunukathikare. Even though you can use the part, which the prosecution can relate. Prosecution thanak, sadagama proyajana padikukku, statementa, proyajana padikukonga, abhingaranga. So I want to say some case laws, so kindly noted down. In reference to Radhendran. In reference to Radhendran versus State of U P. Versus State of U P, two thousand nine. Volume thirteen, two thousand nine, volume thirteen. Supreme Court cases, S T C, page number four eighty. Page number four eighty. Arjun versus State of Chandigarh, next case law. Arjun versus State of Chandigarh. Two thousand seventeen. Two thousand seventeen. Volume three. Volume three. Supreme Court cases. Supreme Court cases, page number two forty-seven. So idhela vandu, some case laws related to hostile witness. Siri, hostile witness, abhinaali, oru besti case law irukka, yarkada teriuma? Regarding hostility. Or hostile witnessku conviction koduthirpang, andha case lawla, yarkada andha case lawa teriuma? Kandipa ninga once aada vandu cross panendhipinga, andha case odhui paira. Yarkada teriuma? Siri kindly noted down, best bakery case.
Surpassing case.
Yes, very good, surpassing case. So vandu, you can make it best bakery case. Abhingsulithu, ninga pay google panningala, entire case odhui history varu. So eppidi andha valakkala vandu, oval time vandu, maati maati pesi hostile agranga. So as a result of which, she is convicted for burglary, vandu false evidence vandu courtukkudukranga, abhingsuli, conviction koduthirpang, andha case la. Like one years, simple imprisonment plus five thousand rupees, fine, abhingarammaris. So you can go through that case law. So vandu, best case on hostility. Siri fine, so in yo paiton, so, one, one, two thousand three amendment, appra sixteen four, two thousand six amendment. Adukapron, three to two thousand thirteen amendment. Three to two thousand thirteen amendment. So andha amendmentla, enana provisions la vandu, maruchin sollunga patho, enana amendments, enana provisionla kodanthanga?
One, one, four A ma'am.
Very good, one, one, four A.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three A, very good. Siri kindly noted down. So fifty-three A, two thousand thirteen amendment padhi, fifty-three A vandhu amendmentachil. One fourteen A amendmentachil. One nineteen amendmentachil. One forty-six amendmentachil. So two thousand thirteen amendmentla, altogether, four, four amendments, four sections la amendment. Four, fifty-three A, one fourteen A, one nineteen, one forty-six. In the provisions la vandu, two thousand thirteen amendmentachil. Ipavandu, seventy-seven A amendment madu, naa clarify pantu, ungsolra, adu vandu, state amendment ah, illa eppidi, illa vandu, abhingaruthu, naa clarify pantukura. Siri fine, ipa so far vandu, namak amendments serinchutsa. Adhutthu, we are moving to doctrines and theories. Ipap ningadha sollaporengya, Indian Evidence Actla, enana doctrines irukka, enana theories irukka, enana provisions la, adu sullipanga. Appringaruthu, ningadha sollaporengya. Siri fine, you can raise your hands, enana doctrines, enana theories. Ah, adheenana provisions la sullipanga, abhingaruthu, ningadha sollaporengya. So terinchungala, hand raise pannanga. Naane pesiddu, naa, itu tungirvina, so let it be a interactive section. Ungaluk teri do, teri illio, you can say. Sollunga Priyan kamam.
Justin Rem, Justin Persoonam.
Okay, very good. Enga sullipanga?
Section forty-one.
Very good, very good. Justin Rem and Justin Persoonam, conclusive proof kada, section forty-one da sordikanga, very good. Maaviran sir, sollunga sir.
Ma'am, Reskis Day, section six ma'am.
Very good, Reskis Day, section six. Sollunga.
Alibi.
Very good. Sollunga sir, sollunga sir.
Ah, Alibi vandu, section eleven.
Very good. Sollunga puna ma'am.
Doctrine of Estoppel, section one fifteen to one seventeen.
Very good, doctrine of Estoppel, very good. Varadha provisions sollringla?
One fourteen, adverse influence.
Very good, adverse influence, very good. Varadha, varanenaya doctrines irukka, enana theories irukka?
Doctrine of confirmation by.
Sollunga, Gajalakshmi ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
Goodity keekutu ma'am, ninga pesiddu, sollunga.
Doctrine of confirmation by.
Okay, good, section twenty-seven. Siri fine, varadha. Okay, okay, varadha, varanenana aruksa.
Doctrine of Estoppel.
Not a rising strain.
Siri, fine, ipa so far.
Doctrine of Agency, section ten of.
Very good, doctrine of Agency, very good, doctrine of Agency, very good. Under section ten, varadha.
Last seen theory madam.
Very good, enga sir sullipanga, last seen theorya?
Section twenty-seven madam.
One, six.
I have a question to you.
One, six, for, okay, okay.
Circumstantial evidence.
One, one, six, la, you are proving that your intention, badhi ninga prove pandringa. So varus impliedly, the doctrine of last seen theory exists, abhingaruthu, enavakeli.
Ah, section, section eight la ma'am.
Sollunga sir.
Subsec, section eight la ma'am, subsequent contact.
No. Motive, motive kuda. Illa, Gajalakshmi. Section seven. You got the point, enna salinga, Harasya?
Section seven ma'am.
Section seven le ebdi varu, section seven li varadu. Adha avadu, the doctrine of last seen theory, abhingaruthu, the, the area of last seen exist in, section six da. Yeah, abhina, adu ellame eda base pannirukka, circumstantial evidence base pannirukka. So or happening ku munadiyo, illa happening ku pinadiyo, another deeds vadi pesuddha, enna du? Reskis change sorun. Ipap kolanakkungal sambavata, yarupakla, adukku munadi naranda happening, accusedto, avittumu onna porangaruthu. Idi enga, idi enga relate pannavina? Question, puriida abhigekran. Can I get my point?
Yes ma'am, yes.
Hmm, appan. Is existing under section six of Indian Evidence Act. Yana, it clearly speaks, yella deeds and transaction, before the, before the event and after the event. Idhavadi pesarada, vandhu, reskis keevi. So on the last year, theory is existing under section six of Indian Evidence Act. Siri fine, varanenana theories and doctrines, sollunga. Siri kindly noted down, firstu doctrine of relevancy. Doctrine of relevancy. The doctrine of relevancy, ninga terinchukruna, section R lindhu, section fifty-five varikirukki, ellame avishime enna du? Doctrine of relevancy, yedala oru valakkadu relevantan sordra, ellame. It, it comes under the doctrine of relevancy, first. So adhu vandu, established da sonnavalak, enna keetinga, Ram Bhikari Adav, andha valakla sullipanga. So what is relevancy and what is admissibility, abhingaruthu? Alaga explain manidukaanga. Siri, firstu doctrine of relevancy. Adhutthu, doctrine of agency. Adu enga irukka, sullipanga, na, section ten. Yeah, section ten la doctrine of agency sordranga na. Agency la ebdi, orutar seyratayala, innoru group pinakepadukrara, leya, abeh pola da. Ninga vandu, rendu kootukutravala irukka, abhina, orutu otthukkara, against, onur personku actaakun, sody sordanga. So it is so called, doctrine of agency, under section ten. Adhutthu vandu padhingana. Doctrine of.
Ma'am, sorry for the interruption, ma'am. Ninga section ten la, doctrine, doctrine of actor question and.
Purila, sollunga ma'am.
Andhak. Andhak, poorak, portpaadu.
Ninga pesiddu, baingrama vittirupu, keekutu ma'am.
Sorry ma'am, inge konda, cloudya arukka, rainya arukka.
Okay, fine, okay, fine. Siri, adhutthu, doctrine of necessity, abhinga oru doctrine irukka, adha enga prevaila arukunna, sollunga patho.
Section thirty-two.
Very good, section thirty-two, doctrine of necessity. Ipavandu, oru, only one dying declaration matan na oru valakkala irukka. Varan endevagayanana evidence me illa, abhingaruthu, bachathila. You can invoke the doctrine of necessity, and, andha deedikku, fulla hundred percent sanction kodukala, abhingsolrada, doctrine of necessity. Oru valakkal, oru valakkala, sambodhi, yarupakla, varan enda motive, varan enda circumstantial evidence me establish pannamudila, abhina. Deedhi matruthu, dying declarationla, intha, innaaradha, intha karandukaahi, enak onnaaradu, abhingaruthu, vandu. So onso, victim state pannidhi, yarundu poyirkar, abhina. Doctrine of necessity invoke panni, dying declarationku full sanction kodutha, adha vachu conviction kodukla, abhingarada. So doctrine of necessity. Adhutthu, ungaluk rumbu rumbu importantana onu, ningam marundithinga, section eleven la onu irukka, enna sullunga patho. It is a theory. Section eleven la, what theory it is?
Alibi.
Comment, amang. Theoryki paira enna?
Doctrine of Eclipse. Eclipse.
No, adhala vandu, one question. I'm asking, what is the theory, existing behind the alibi? Yellaram marundithingala, chain link theory. Chain link, chain link theory padichirukka, illa, adha avadu, oru accused vandu, thanodhui presence oru adathla illa, abhingsolrara, abhina. Thanodhui, thanodhui presence varu oru adathla irukkunna, oru prove pandrara, na, he should prove it through the chain link theory da. Na, ettul lindhu, patthi, ingirindha, patthul lindhu, panandengindha, panand lindhu, renthengindha, rendhal lindhu, nalengindha, nalmanik kapron, naa vitu poida, vitu poida, maarga. Ya, ya, manai, naa idhramanik poida, adukke examine mandrake, neighborakuttukonga, abhingsuli. Ublu avishingala, avar enna pananu? Chain link theory valiya, andha chain link la, oru chinnak breakage idhada, kuda enna manamattu? Benefit of doubt, accusedku kodukamattu. So the theory which is existing behind the section eleven, enna keetinga? The doctrine of chain link, chain link theory da. Angirukka kudiyah theory, in pair chain link theory. Oru, oru adathla naa illa, abhingaruthu, oru accused prove pannanu, abhina. Avar varay, enga irundharangaruthu, prove pandruthu, mattu podadu. Avar engalaa irundharan, the naalmulukka, entire transaction carried agar varikyum. Andha naalmulukka, oru engalaa irundharu, abhingaruthu, prove pandu, that is so called chain link theory. Siri fine. Adhutthu, varadha doctrines irukka, sollunga patho. So vandu, namak vandu, doctrine of relevancy, appra vandu, reskis day irukka, that is under section six. Circumstantial evidence, nama value pandruthu, reskis day, adu pathachil, section eleven la, chain link theory pathachil. Adhutthu vandu padhingana, section ten la vandu, doctrine of agency pathachil. Adukapron vandu, forty-one la, just syndrome and just personam. Adha avadu, oru conclusive proof or judgmenta, nama use pannammo. Oru private individualsku kodukkudiyah, edayi, edpatruthu, kudiyah judgment, vandu, judgment and personam. Adhuvay vandu, when a judgment is against a whole world, na, it is just syndrome, abhingsuli, nama patho, forty-one. Adukapron, kudiyah, idu sollunga patho.
Best evidence rule.
Ah, best evidence rule, ah, very good, best evidence rule.
Section ninety-one.
Very good, best evidence rule, section ninety-one. Yeah, keetinga, adha avadu, documentary evidence irukkammo, oral evidence kaangayadame kadayadu, adha nama enna panirumo? When a document should be proved, na, it should be produced as it is. Oru document udai content, ipap, yengappa, enak, sothai, yedhithirkaru, naa sollu, abhina. Na, verumana, vaivaliya, sullitup, poidukumudiyadu. So I should prove it by producing a bill. Oru bill laiyo, illa oru settlement deedio, naa produce pannidha, naa enna pananu? Na, vandu, I should prove it. Ipap naa vandu, appidi prove pannanavaavishita, luthu, disprove pannanu, avuru oral account kodukuradu. He should prove by, he should prove by the documentary events, apporu document udai contentsa, enna pananu? Document udai da prove pannu. So best evidence principle, very good.
Armchair principle.
Armchair ruling illa, that is on bill, naa the experimenta karasiya, armchair rule vandu, not, not here. That is an Indian, that is a succession act.
Section hundred la varute.
Section hundred, it speaks about, yes, section hundred la enna sordranga na? Ninga kodukkudiyah presumption, ingera ningavachukka, presumption vandu, you cannot apply in hundred, sordranga. So armchair rule, abhina, enna keetinga, armchair, armchair theory, armchair rule, abhina. Ninga so far, Indian Evidence Actla vandu, pathkammo, oru ambiguity, it speaks about the ambiguity. Engayaa, vandu, oru porul mayakam vandu, eyipattirukka, abhina. Andha yadtha, andha porul mayakta, eh, yepdi interpret pandla, abhingaruthu, avishita vandu, sullipanga. Aana, section hundred la vandu, directa, enginevandu, succession act vadiyo, illa ninga armchair, the rulea use pannanu, ungaru sordada. But enna sordranga na, exception clausea mattu sordanga, in the principlesa, ninga billuku use pannamudiyada, abhingaranga. Appa billuku, nama enna use pannala, na, armchair theory. Ipav oru bill irukka, oru wheel vandu, orutar yelukkara, adha, onirundu vaartegal, bitupattu poych, onirundu vaatha, enna irukkunai, terla? Anga spaces vandhi emptya irukka. Appa court vandu, tanak ishtamana vaatha, ellanga potukkuyadu. Appa adukka, there brings the armchair rule. Anga vandu, armchair rule, abhina, enna na? Oru, oru vayadana, oru vayadu move padayindu, oruvar, eppidi thanodhui easy charla, ukkandhu, yost pathi, yar kelthula? Enna la sulli, yelthula, enana terms and conditions poodala, nanachirparo? Abeh pola, oru judge, enna pananu? Andha kurupitan, abarudiyas shoesla, he should step in. Anga poya, aurudiyas sulnala, yendha yoscha, avar enna mananala, yelthirparu, enna words, anga apta arukku? Appringaruthu, avar, avar, grahuchu yelthunu, grahuchu interpret pandu, abhingaranga. So that is so called armchair rule, or armchair theory. Bill laportavarkyum, nama vandu, Indian Evidence Actla, ambiguity, ebdi nama vandu, sari pandrumo? Abeh pola, billil, kudiyah ambiguous termsyo, illa ambiguous spaceyo, vandha, naanu la fill pannamudiyadu. Anga vandu, nama vandu, existence la vandu, armchair rule vandu, vandruv, abhingaranga. Siri fine, good. Idhela vandu, enna du?
Best evidence must be adduced.
Adhalanga, golden rules of evidence, adhulavandru. Golden rules of evidence la vandru, adhila vandu. Golden rules of evidence la vandruo, adhilama, idhada. Na, ungalu, provision solipan, rule of caution and rule of law, na, ya, varka, ilathukon? Rule of caution and rule of law.
Uh, yes, ma'am, accomplice, one thirty-three, and.
Very good. Section one, one fourteen subsection B A U, section one thirty-three, solipan, so, one thirty-three is rule of law. One, no, one fourteen B is rule of caution. So, idhelaama vandu, uh, idhelaama rules. When you study in rule vice, or theory vice, appadichingana, almost, naraaya provisions, namu cover pannirmo. So, adhalaa rules and theory, appara, namak ennaan padikinno, abdi kektinga, rules and theory vice la. So, doctrine of relevancy, resus stay, uh, no, chain link theory, uh, doctrine of agency under section ten. Adhuk apara, vandu, hmm, just syndrome and justin personam in section forty-one. Adhuk apara, vandu pathingana, hmm, doctrine of necessity under section thirty-two. So, idhelaama vandu, namavandu, invoke pannipadikna, appara, rule of law, rule of caution, adhuk apara, hundred la irukku kuruyi, armchair rule. Ipo, thari vice appadichamna, namu naraaya cover pannirmo. Sari, fine, adutthu, Indian Evidence Act la irukku kuruyi, Latin maxims. Enna Latin maxims, sorukku, solunga papo.
Ma'am, oru oru doubting, ma'am.
Solunga, ma'am.
Ma'am, the justin, uh, justin dremma, the justin personam, solingala, adhuk, meaning, solingala, adhavattha, uru time, solunga.
Uh, kandipa, ipo, justin dremma, birremma, abdi na, world, na, athama. Ipo vandu, oru right against the whole world, abdi na, ipo, ipo, for example, ungi, no, telliwa, solnu, abdi na. Ipo vandu, rendaayati amchilavandu, pengelukku suthurumay irukku, abdinga, soranga. Ipo vandu, suthurumay irukke, tapirikpadada suthla, tagapunaradu suthla, pengelukku orimay irukkunna, thudu, judgment. Ipo vandu, uh, ipu, Tamil Nadu lakka kuruyi, ellarakme, applicablea illia?
applicable, ma'am.
applicable, appo, innaari judgment vandu, whole space ka applicablea irukka, abdi na, adhu peere, just syndrome. Ipo, naanam, Ambika ma'am, oru valakkupodra, na, Ambika ma'am, malla oru valakkupodra, oru, oru, avanga, ya, veeetukporethu, ivu, ivu, taratham, meedha, ponnu, doorvalita irukka, abdi na, vandu, valakkupodukkunna. Ipo, ya, ya, akvali irukka, illa ya, soli, the dispute, oru remedy varuthu, ipa, ivinga, yengarndu, vethu, kulla, vandu, judgment, idhu. Idhuvan ennaadu? Judgment in personam, ingradu. Ipo, namak, inka, inka, judgment, orutthar enna panamudiyaadu? Ivungal againsta, court, judgment, kuruthukada, idhe righta, avungal againsta, na, exercise pandra, abdinga, soru, kekamudiyaadu. So, adhu tha, ipo, for example, na, oru, oru pen vachirka, ipo, oru pen, na, vachirka. Indha pen, the pen oru right, engittarakku. Ipo, indha pen, worldathulirukka, yaar, adhu vandu, even, yaar, worldathul, entha moolali, entha naattoda pradamaro, ille, entha naattoda praseelo, vandu, thridnaalo, avungal againsta, theft charge initiate pandraki, enakidhu, yena, andha pen, kuruyi right, enak, abdi irukku, right and rem. Appa, vandu, against the whole world, I'm exercising my right. Iduveen, Ambika ma'am, kodan, oru contract, koodukkata, padanju, raike, na, penna kurukkata, avanga, patruva, kurukkata, angju, raike, kurukla. Na, ipa, poi, indha pen, ipayee, andha pen, malla, right irukku, anana, na, poi, enna pandra, courtla case poren, ona, angju, raike, kurugan? Illa, ya, penna thiripikurugan, kekranu, na, ipay, indha kurupitthu, pen, da, angi, subject matter, idhuli, enada, right irukku. Anana, idhu enna ayyadu, yengarndu, vethu, kulla, nadakaravala, na, it turned as a persona. Appa, vandu, oru judgment, abdi na, when it is applicable to the whole world, na, it's judgment and rem. Adhuvay vandu, when it is applicable between the two parties, rendu individuals, na, it is judgment in persona. Okay, va, ma'am? Ambika ma'am, okay, va?
Uh, thank you, ma'am, puriida, ma'am, puriida, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Praveenam, madam. Uh, madam, onu, na, ninga, soru, naraaya listu, ningala, east opal, thududu, thermi, east opal, vandu, ennaadu, doctor, na, thera, maru, ennaadu? Adhu varuma?
Doctrine of estoppel, kandipa, vandu, solam, maranthi, doctor of estoppel.
Okay, okay.
Doctrine of estoppel, appara, doctrine of reverse burden, vinga, enna provision, ne, solunga papo? Doctrine of reverse burden.
Ma'am, one not, one not, one not, sorry, one not three.
One not two.
One not three.
One not, one not three, la, one not three, one not two, la, madhara, reverse burden, thukka.
One not five.
Kindly go through section one thirteen B. One thirteen B, enna soludhu? Reverse burden, yappayee, me, oru prosecution, there, beyond the doubt. Prosecution, oru, kailiruke. Anana, adhuvay vandu, sila circumstances, la, vandu, prosecution, amaydiyaarukku. Prosecution, vandu, preponderance of probability, prove pannitha, kodapodu, appa, entire burden, yaar, melapaidu. The owner's restaurant, the accused, accused, enna pananu? Thanakku, sadakamana vishingla, tha, nirupikkinu, avan na, andha case, vandu, viduvikirukke, beyond the doubt, prosecution, prove pannla, abdinga, kattino. Na, enudaya case, besta, prove pannilka, abdinga, accused should prove. Adhutha, reverse burden, vandu, accused, adhu vandu, speaks under section one thirteen B, one one three B of Indian Evidence Act. Idhelaama, vandu, some of the doctrines, doctrine of estoppel, abdi na. Na, munnaadi, agree pannanu vishyata, pinnaadi, na, enna panamudiyaadu, maathipesam, I'm, I'm being estoped. Na, munnaadi, sonnu vishyata, maathipesarukka, na, thada, vandu, angavandruo, so, I'm not permitted to do so, idhelaama, theories. So, ninga, theories vice, appadichinganaalo, major portion of the act, vandu, ninga, cover pannirmo. So, idhu, adhuk apara, vandu pathingana, each and every section, po, we have some case laws, landmark judgments irukku. Landmark case laws, ipa, thirty-two, nedutha, the most landmark case laws, pakalanarani, samikishta. Yena, andho, oru valakla, vandu, the poet varan, na, inga, poran, aprinna, motta, kada, sa, nambi, pona, oruttharode, statementa. Yappadi namavandu, dying declaration, deem mandruo, abdinga, thada, anga vishyam. Adehmatri pathingana, later days, vandu, dying, multiple dying declaration, pathi, namu, pessipu. Adhaavathu, oru, oru, aal, naraaya, peritthu, thanudaya, irappukkana, karantu, solitkaara, na. Namadala, vandu, eda, vandu, approve pannala, abdinga, vishyata, naraaya case laws, so, that, upur provision, po, namak, naraaya case laws, irukku. So, that, you should know, what on the landmark judgment, saptinga, ungi, tharunjika, podu? Kandipa, ninga, vandu, exams, vandu, crack, pannala. Apart from that, ungalu, reason, dark, kuruyi judgment, yena, pathingana, ipu, two thousand seventeen, na, sonna, the hostility, oru, judgment, la, pathingana. It speaks that prosecution, vandu, relay, relay, pannikla, enthalavu, vandu, hostility, hostile witness, oru, statement, kodan. Namrely, pannamudiyaadu, andha extent, varik, relay, pannikla, abdi na, soru, adhuk apara, resus stay, kela, pathingana, reference to Ramraj case. Na, ungalu, Ramraj case, solipan, Delshin, oru, ekulay, valakke. Adhalama, vandu, yappadi, vandu, uh, even, de facto complaint, antvadu, sambavathu, pakkavee, illa. But, proximate time, la, ungalu, intimidation, kuruthunala, she had become a, a good witness, avanga, avanga, witness, yappadi, vandu, appreciate, pannanga. Abdinga, vishyata, vandhri, na, namavandu, patho. Uh, idhu, idhamaari, vandu, namak, vandu, edhu, naraaya intellect questions, doctors, base panni. Naraaya intellect questions, irukku. Indian Evidence Act la porutha varikyo, pathingana, uh, uh, oru act, vandu, it agrees and disagrees in later part. Munnaadi, vandu, oru vishyata, ninga, pannanga, abdi, soru. Pinnaadi, paru, naraaya, idhal, ningal, pannakurada, abdinga, vishyata, vandhri, naraaya, idhal, agreeing and disagreeing, irukku. So, ninga, padikimodu, yappadi, padikunna, oru rule, vandu, generala, vandu, enna soludhu? Uh, specific, yappadi, soludhu, adhuk, very good example, ennaan kektinga? Uh, section sixty-eight. Section sixty-eight, section sixty-eight tha, yes, one minute, please. Section sixty-eight tha. Adhaavathu, oru attested documenta, ninga, prove pannu, abdi na, attesting witness, kuruthuvaru, abdinga, idhuvan, general terms, soru, kanga. Adhuk apara, thirupi, enna soranga, iduveen, vandu, Indian Registration Act, kiila, ninga, oru document, register, pannirukinga, abdi na. Ninga, attesting witness, konduvaravendi, avasimilla, abdinga. Adutthu, idhu, yu, solitte, Kadasiya, enna soranga, attesting witness, benda, abdinga, soranga, Indian Registration Act, kiila, ninga, file, pannu, abdi na. Anana, inna, mala, sonna, edhu, me, edhu, applicable, kadayadu. In this, so on so, billi, applicable, kadayadu, yeah, kektinga, at least, one attesting witness, should be examined. Ungalu, kitthu, witness, e, illa, yella, attesting witness, setupaita, na, kodan, handwriting, examine, manano, section forty-seven, thukka, alladu? Na, idhamaari, the transaction, paththa, soru, yaar, oru third party, vandu, soru, abdinga. So, vandu, it has multiple ways to prove the, on the document, prove pandruka. So, that, Indian Evidence Act la porutha varikyo, intha part, le, jisolitanga, adheyve, mark, intha part, le, jisolitanga, abdinga, ninga, besta, besta, padikunna. Verumanan, vandu, sixty-eight, kiila, vandu, attesting documenta, attesting witness, thukka, prove pannu, abdinga, ungalu, tharunjikkinga, abdi na. Uh, adhuk, kiil, kuruyi, Indian Registration Act, la, register, panna, document, kattesting witness, e, illa, kathud, thiriyamukkuyu. Idhu, ninga, padikilinga, billi, at least, one attesting witness, should be examined, thiriyamukkuyu. So, that, appa, billi, pathi, oru question, kekraga, how many witnesses should be examined? Uh, anana, anana, bill, abdi, kekta, anana, at least, one attesting witness, thiriyu. Illa, in absence of any attesting witness, na, yaar, orutthar, in order to prove the handwriting, abdinga. Ipo, recenta, kodan, orisa, high court, vandu, oru judgment, kuruthukanga. Adhaavathu, section seventy-three of Indian Evidence Act, seventy-three, edha pathi base thudu?
Comparison of.
Comparison.
Ah, comparison. Comparison of.
Very good, very good, comparison of signature, pathi base thudu. Ipo, section forty-five, liu, signature tha. Section forty-seven, liu, signature tha. Adhey, section seventy-three, liu, signature tha. Ingamoon, vishyam, signature, pathan, moon, vishyam, irukku. Forty-five la, ivrtha, kayilthupattara, expert, opina, alupla. Forty-seven la, yaar, orutthar, adikkadi, oru, nabarudaya, kageelathu, paththa, palakkappattavu, abdi na. Aquatine with the handwriting of the concerned person, avu, vandu, forty-seven, thukka, soru. Adutthu, seventy-three, ipu, court, enna pannala, specimen, collect, pannidi, compare, pannukla, abdinga. Sila, nairangal, court, enna pandraga, abdi, kektinga? Ipo, na, reason, nanadhana, case la, Ramshiri, note, lakka, kuruyi, kayerathu, compare, pandrathu, andha, accused, kuruyi, vakkaalathu, liu, avudaya, counter statement, di, irundhu, kuruyi, kayerathu, compare, pannuka. Idhu, valid, abdi, thukka. Naraaya, judgments, enna soru, ninga, vakkaalathu, lakka, compare, pannakunnaadu, ninga, enna pananu? Specimen, collect, pannanu, abdinga. So, ittanal, suggestion, andhda, orisa, high court, vandu, pannirukanga, kektinga? Kandipa, seventy-three, kiila, uh, copies, lakka, kuruyi, signature, compare, pannanga, na. Court, idhukka, signature, compare, pannanga, soli, oru specimen, a, collect, panni, andha specimen, kodan, compare, pannu, abdinga.
Second, now, judgment, pathanga, three thirteen, questioning, sign, monna, tha, compare, pannanga, signature.
Uh, three thirteen, ipai, actually, pathingana, three thirteen, ninga, two thirteen, questioning, la, na, maximum, vandu, court, varo, question, mandranga. Poi, valakkunna, solitup, poydranga, anana, indha, frame, chand, sorutthu, oru, reason, judgment, la, vandu, it is very clearly stated, that, ninga, subsection five of the three thirteen, daralama, ninga, enna pannala? You can, uh, deliver your answers. Ipo, questioning, kekraga, ivu, naraaya, courtla, ninga, pathiripin, kada, 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 vasipanga, idhamaari, idhnaala, thedi, la. Uh, ninga, oni, ngi, poi, thappala, pannikla, indha, valak, purushinga, enna soranga, abdi, keepanga. Appadi, keegma, accused, poi, valakkunna, unga, tharabada, satchirukka, na, illa, ya, bind, poiruva, angala, tha, anana. We have an, we have an opportunity to deliver. Namakidha, enna, irukku, daralama, vandu, three thirteen, subsection five, kiila, na, intha, statementa, ipadu, deny, pannra, indha, karantana, deny, pannu, soru, return, la, kurukka. But, maximum, three thirteen, la, namayar, return, la, kurukkada, la. Uh, so far, na, patha, varikyo, ipai, ipai, vandu, indha, ruling, apara, what, what I am doing, is that, three thirteen, questioning, na, vandu, answer, vandu, the directa, pani, pannaladu, avu, avu, return, la, kuruthu, submit, pannavakira. So, adhu, vandu, far bettera, irukku. Anana, enna, oru, periy, oru, lagging, three thirteen, la, vandu, oru, namavandu, oru, kurukram, abdi na. Namalater, schedule, enna, difference, idhukka, poro, abdinga, pre-intimate, pannidru. Adhu, namak, fatal, agra, karantana, vandu, return, la, poramukkum, but, vandu, remba, vital, illa, namam, namalodu, difference, vandu, endavagali, fatal, aha, adhu, daralama, vandu, return, la, kurukka. But, thank you, Subash, three thirteen, la, vandu, ipada, return, la, format, pannidana, but, well, court, vandu, ipa, nanandu, orisa, high court, oru, ruling, la, vandu, is very clearly stated, that. Idhamaari, vandu, ninga, seventy-three, la, vandu, compare, pannringa, abdi na. So, that, vandu, ninga, vandu, uh, compare, pandrathu, specimen, taniya, collect, pannitha, compare, pannu, abdinga, vishyata, soru. So, thama, recent judgments, appu, vandu, kuj, grass, pannikunna, appo, po, inga, allarukku. So, regarding the Evidence Act, ninga, Evidence Act, padikimodu, verumanan, Evidence Act, padikathu, it is not, uh, give you, bore you food. Kandipa, vandu, oru, nalla, results, kadekuma, abdi na, kadayadu. Kandipa, Indian Evidence should be, uh, club up with, uh, uh, IPC and CRPC. Ipo, namak, thirinu, ipo, orutthar, orutthar, hostile witness, sam, marra, abdi na. Avungal againsta, namalaa, perjury, kana, poi, poi, poiya, oru, satchin, kuruthanga, abdinga, initiate, pannamudiima, abdi, kekta, kandipa, namak, IPC, thirinu. Appa, IPC, thirinu, abdi na, IPC, la, namor, provision, one ninety-three, la, pakkro, abdi na. Namavandu, directa, vey, namak, enna, thirinu, one ninety-two, one ninety-three, pakkro, directa, vey, we should know, endha, provision of the, uh, CRPC, is, idhuli, one ninety-three. So, vandu, one, sorry, one ninety-three, uh, one, one ninety-four, something else, appu, vandu. So, that, namak, edhu, na, triangle, la, vandu, padikunnu, very, Evidence Act, matthu, vandu, padipan, abdinga, thukurada. So, Evidence Act should club up with IPC and CRPC. Appa, Evidence Act, vandu, IPC, la, enna provision, la, connecta, irukku, CRPC, la, enna provision, connecta, irukku, abdinga, namak, thirinu. Ipo, vandu, uh, namak, namak, idhamaari, vandu, ipo, four ninety-eight, a, la, vandu, namak, case, kurukram, abdi na, IPC, la, irukku. Appa, four ninety-eight, a, poruthu, provision, enka, CRPC, la, one ninety-eight, a, la, irukku. So, that, namavandu, uh, triangle, la, vandu, padikunnu, evidence, IPC, CRPC. Indha, three major acts, la, namatara, vaidana, namavarka, marka, poyitthu, criminal act, thutu, namam amendments, pathathu, reason, judgments, pathadi, ponnale, podu. So, vandu, provision, vice, padikathu, vada, ipa, exam, orienteda, namak, padikiru, already, kuj, provision, vice, padichcha, abdi na. Kandipa, concept, liesa, ponga. Uh, indha, concept, idha pathi base thudu, indha, concept, la, idha vishyam, irukke, indha, concept, la, ithna, case laws, irukke, indha, thidhu, rulings, irukka, abdinga, thidhu. Concept, liesa, ponnigana, innu, bettera, arukku. Sari, fine, idhola, vandu, session, vandu, mutchikra. Ungalu, tha, doubts, irukke, innu, furthera, enna, pannala, ipa, sonnadu, ungalu, useful, a, iru, bacha, adhalaa, ninga, soru.
Nam, Latin, where, soru, na, maximum.
Latin maxims, uh, solunga, sir, Latin maxims, solunga, sir.
Ninga, soru, ninga, ma'am.
Oh, na, soru, na, sorry. Uh, idhla, vandu, idhla, vandu, maximum, vandu, kekka, patta, na, so far, vandu, second paper, thutu, blueprint, kodagala? Oru, rendu, moon, maxims, tha, adhalama, just syndrome, and justin personam, ingirukka, abdinga, kektrukanga. Adhuk apara, vandu, pathingana, uh, dying declaration, kudiyi, oru, 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 maxims, thirima, ellathukon?
Nemo, morris, gross, winter, winter.
Very good. Nemo, meritres, proximeter, menturi. Adhaavathu, uh, irakkum, nalil, oru, irakkum, nalil, irukkum, oruvar, uh, poi, navagal, oru, eravinay, sandikamattan, so, vandu, erekpor, yaar, poi, soramattanga. Abdi, soru, ruling, tha, vandu, andha, andha, maxim. So, maximum, question, paper, la, kekka, patta, maxims, thukka. So, ungi, enna, maxims, irukka, abdinga, vandu, oru, PDF, vay, eduthu, ungalu, groupla, post, pannitaru. Apart from that, ninga, vandu, padikiramodu, documents, na, documents, ethna, types, irukku. Document, vandu, document, a, thak, prove pannam, na, ninety-one, la, solitukaanga, idhe, matri, oru, document, vandu, accept, pannikunna, abdi na. Avu, document, format, la, thak, kurukunna, abdinga, varengala, solitukaanga. Oru question, kekranu, ipa, ungalu, ninety-one, la, soranga, contents of documenta, documenta, da, ninga, prove, pannu, soranga. Adehmatri, ana, provision, varengirukku. Narukku, thiriliya? Section twenty-two and twenty-two, eight. So, it clearly states that, oru oral, oru oral documenta, vandu, adha, oral, oral admission, vandu, contents of documenta, pathi, irukka. Documenta, prove, kurutha, da, namavandu, enna, pannu, oral, event, thutukon, sorry, twenty-two, uli, no. Oru, electronic record, lakka, kuruyi, vishyata, uh, ninga, submit, pannringa, abdi na. Ninga, oru, statement, kam, electronic record, a, kurutha, thak, accept, pannikku, abdinga, vishyata, soru. Appa, ninety-one, enga, club up, pannipadikuna, section twenty-two, twenty-two, early, padikunna. Adehmatri, vandu, pathingana, judicial notice, thutukamodu. Adhalima, naraaya, case laws, irukku. Adhalima, nareyakease laws irukku, uh, notifications pathi la, arukka, appa, notifications pathi judicial, uh, notice, edutthuklam, appina, edutthuklam, appin ingaada? Appa, adhukana, case laws irukku, so, andh madhri, vandu, conceptualizea, padichsa, kudzu better, epa, ninety-one, appina, ninety-one kodu, connected provision, enna? Ipa, one thirty-three, nah, one thirty-three, oru connected provision, enna? Section, ten, nah, ten, oru connected provision, enna, obviously? Ovanukkukkudiyay, connectivity, seythi, padichingala, enna bettera, padikla? So, so far, question, adhikapadiana, keedruthu, Nemo, meritris, proximeter menti, inthe, inthe, maxim, keedrakaanga? So, list of maxims, oru PDF, na, ungalu, share pandra? Any doubts?
Madam, one twenty-three la, the oru maxims.
Ma'am, nige, group, vandu, ma'am, muthumey, kekamate, sir? Kila, yana kekamadu, than, nige, thirila?
Break agadu.
But, ungu voice, audibla, all. Fine, ellaramay, ellaramay, share pandipadipo, na, na, naanemi, katrindavala, ellal, so, far to go.
Ma'am, orudautuk, ma'am.
Solunga, ma'am.
Ma'am, the armchair principle, sonningala, ma'am? Hmm, adhu, villu kumattu, na, apply, applicable, aguma, adhalamattu, thav apply pandamudiyadu?
Villu kumattu, nah, villu kumattu, thav applicable.
Dying declaration, thav apply pandamudiyadu, ngaa?
Yeah, apply pandamudiyadu. Okay, ma'am, thank you. Doctrine of frustration, irukku, blue pencil theory irukku, na, nareyak, theories irukkal, over act, over theory irukku? So, that, succession act, panna, rule, tham, principle, tham, armchair rule. Adhu vandu, adhu vandu, nige, vandu, exceptions clause, vandu, solappattu, hundred, kumattu, applicable, adhva, yeduk, apply pandamudiyadu?
Okay, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. Uh, innamari, nige, padikamode, test identification parade, uh, innamadhri, irukku kudhi, conceptualizea, epa, na, section nine la, edhumay, directa, arukka? It speaks about the test identification parade and scientific test like DNA profiling. Uh, adhuk aprav, idhelaam, so, vandu, innamari, one twelve, padikiringa, appina, conclusive proof, vandu, non-law case, aprav, entri, maru? So, innamari, ovanu, conceptualize, ponnigana, appina? Nareyavashingal, damjukla, na, appidu, thav so far, padikira? So, that, ovanan, nige, appin, vandu, conceptualizea, padikamode, nare, epa, admission, confession, kana, difference, enna? Extra judicial confession, nah, enna judicial confession, nah, enna? Appin, idhukarathu, padichinga, appina, romba, far bettera arukku?